This is the park and I will call down Township Planning Commission meeting for August 20th at two quarter. Hey, I am here. Jesse?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Leah's excused, Jasmine's excused, Casey?
Here.
And Kevin?
Here.
Anything for the agenda tonight to change? Nothing to add?
Need motion to approve the agenda?
Support. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? At the minutes from the July 18th work session and the 25th meeting? See anything for adjustment or would like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July 18th work session and the July 25th meeting.
Or a motion? Right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Alright, now we're up to public comment. You have something on the agenda, we will be getting down to that, but if you have anything in the general comment, if anyone would like to make a comment, we'll go ahead and open that up at 6:02. We had a lot of comments earlier. I just thought maybe this might be time for those who have some. I appreciate that. Alright, public comments, public comment at 6:03. Alright, we are up to items for public hearing. We do have the group home for SU 23-06 and SPR 23-10 for 4067 Central Road. Brittany?
Yes.
Okay. What we'll do is we'll have you, you just want to come up to the podium and just give us a brief overview of what it is you're looking for? And explain for the group what you want to go on?
Hi, um, thanks Brittany. I'm trying to open up a childcare group home to better serve the community. There is such a need in the skating valley and surrounding areas that people need daycare. I'm just, you know, just trying to serve people better. I have a wide range of hours to out-serve, you know, office people or people who need us, like healthcare workers or factory workers that have to go into work early or, you know, or stay later. I hope you guys approve it. I mean, everybody else has, you know, through this whole process as a brief bit, so hopefully they approve it.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Uh, we really don't approve the business, am I right? It's the state that would do that or the counties that you're dealing with kids and, uh, you don't need a license?
Yeah, sorry, I actually right now I'm running a family home, which is six. I'm just trying to go to 12. And then I'm going, I run a family home right now, which is six, and 12 is approved.
Okay.
And then I already have a state license. Like for example, I have my licensing rush, he's coming out on Friday to do my inspection. And then I can open up my, open up for 12 on Tuesday after the holidays.
So you don't have a comment? You have employees or yourself would be up and awake and monitoring kids all night long?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. How many employees would you have?
I, you have to have, for every six kids, you have to have one employee. So 12 kids, two people, one to me and one other person.
That responsibility.
It is. I've done it for years.
Yeah.
Working in another daycare. So, and I've dannyed for that family for years since I was 15.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Public hearing portion first, I go ahead and open up the public hearing for this at 6:05. The public comments? I will close the public hearing at 6:05. Any forward comment?
Your new business is at the same location your existing business is within?
Yes.
But I remember you, we talked about the fans and the property line, so you're, you're expanding your services in the same organization, basically?
Yes, just going for the six kids. It's like with your guys' , you know, township roles and the state's roles, I don't need zoning permission for six. I only need a zoning for 12.
You know a lot more about it than I do.
Trust me, it's.
It's good.
Yes.
What would the state allow you to go to for a, for a maximum number at the location?
Like my, I'm not gonna, my goal eventually somewhere down the line is to open up a center because there's such a need for it. Like I used to, I'm sure you know Crystal and Travis. I worked, I worked for them for, uh, since I was 15. I was their living nanny. And then they bought the house right next door to them. They sent leases over to us.
Okay.
Um, and renovated it for me and I've been open for six since March of 2022.
Okay.
But if you open up a center, you have to have a degree.
Okay.
Are these still doing childcare at their place?
I still help out with their kids and whatnot.
You're definitely providing a service to the community.
Yeah, and that was the main.
Somebody shift working.
And that was my main goal is when I worked for Crystal, I, we used to do all three shifts.
Yeah.
Is it, wait, there's, you know, factory workers that have to go in early or, you know, healthcare workers that have to go in early or healthcare workers who get mandated late. Or there's, you know, foster parents who need daycare on like off shifts or whatever.
Anyone have any other questions or anyone would like to make a motion?
License and signatures waiting for that one single.
I'll make a motion to approve the SU 23-06 and SPR 23-10 for 4067 Central Road group childcare home as presented.
Support.
Take your vote, call a vote around this. Dee?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Move this forward. Move on to communications. There's some information in there. No unfinished business and then we'll move on to new business. We will start with, uh, SPR 23-11, 2955 Whitehall Road, Kate's Transportation. Is there anyone here for that? That's the one.
Yeah, she didn't mention to me that she is not feeling well, so she, I didn't know. I can describe it briefly. She bought the old deal with Maya's sandblasting and they, they've been cleaning up the site. It was previously a light, light case. That was put on hold. The new owners to take care of it. They have, working on it. The only reason why this needs to come to the planning commission is because they are looking at, looking at parking vehicles outside, expanding the use to outside spaces, but also because it's sort of a similar use situation where it's similar to a rental car facility where they had these cars. But they're running the transportation service. Those are the new transportation to medical appointments. What did, I believe I put a sample motion that would cover, cover this approval as a similar use.
Do you feel like a small used car lot directly next to that, Cars Park, how they, is that close?
There were cars there. There's an auto repair.
Close to the north.
Yeah, that side. It's like 2915. That's when I turned in the turn around and I went past it.
There's the, there's the in-home care business, McMillan Road.
Yep.
The BP, and then nor, or north on the same side, there is a big used car lot. If that's what you're thinking of.
No, that's a big corner on Tyler.
Yeah. No, I'm thinking directly to the south, driving south of Wayne or Maya's Old Road.
We're just out there, right next door to this lot is, uh, metal building and it's auto repair. And there's only, there's like two cars out front of it. This, this property is nice size. Uh, the buildings are tired. Any improvement would be great. I'm sure for the neighbors and surrounding businesses. It looks like it'd be a good place for this. They're pretty beat up. So, I have no problem with the plan.
I have no problem with the plan. I'd love to see Crystal definitely clean it up better than it is right now.
End of conversation or someone would like to do a sample maybe?
I'll do a sample. I make a motion that the proposed non-emergency medical transport service is similar to other permitted uses in the C2 zoning district and meets the standards of section 11.2. W. I move to approve SPR 23-11 at 2955 Whitehall Road for Kate's Transport.
I support. Take your vote on this one? Yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Next up, we have SPR 23-12 for 454 West McMillan Road disposal. Want the summary?
Yes, please.
Alright, I was like, by the representative of, uh, just trying to finish off this project. A couple of years ago, I got approved a new storage facility for trucks and maintenance and things like that. Looking through the office to that same location, so, you know, it's locations that many people look back for. Currently, the drawings as you see them include a garage. The garage is a question, question right now, so if we approve this garage, we'll improve hopefully. That's a smaller scale. I'm pretty sure it's gonna get mixed with possible building materials and stuff like that, so. That is the plan. Any questions?
Nice piece of work. Plenty of room to grow. Building that other large building behind this or not?
Yeah, so the large building that's surrounding where this is slated to go is the facility where the trucks and maintenance.
Yeah.
That's been a great fit. Lot for some growth without impacting the neighborhood or anything. Thank you, sir. We have any private questions or where you are?
Pretty nice.
I could, we'll say if there are things missing up in the list in there, it's kind of been a speed to try to get this speed to be available for the public. Okay, everyone's speed, can you see? Just like. That's why I can't afford it. Essential.
Where's the current office?
It's fixed 21 Dawson, the location that we have our business. The office is still there and they're existing, selling right now, so.
McMillan and Riverhead Dawson.
Yeah.
Please, it helps me.
Put these items, site items, we did here. What do you think you want to do with this Steve? Like, uh, you guys looking for like a, actual approval or? What do you think?
I didn't see any that, didn't see anything missing that would apply. They have, there's stormwater. Did there stormwater address?
You don't do the garage or you just, is the building footprint getting smaller or you replace?
Just completely taking.
You would take off that and off the street?
Chop that all off.
Okay.
So topographic contours aren't there, but.
Right. I'm just thinking of items listed better on the plan, you know, as far as septic system landscape, blah, blah, blah.
I don't think it needs any landscaping. You've seen the neighborhood. I don't think they, if they put up water, it wishes any of the better than the neighborhood.
I'd rather do that.
Please around that area, yeah. The nice part about that area though, it's pretty quiet.
Was this part of the industrial park? No, that's across the street?
Yeah.
Okay. The rail trails east of your lot.
Right.
West. About it.
It's a little bit odd with the garbage company, as clean as looking driveway and everything.
They're kind of picky, man.
You know, we sent the little ones out to clean trash, so there's our, we'll clean up next.
There's just very moderate external lighting shown, just a couple of little small fixtures. Is that your whole plan for external lighting?
Yes, we're not gonna have a lot out there. We don't want to make it, so it's so obvious with everything, with all the documents and stuff that'll be in there, so. We're only open till five o'clock every day, so.
All the bad on this plan right here, is this your, your architectural group waiting for answers from you guys?
Yeah, those were, we had, we just gave a couple of questions.
It's not really for us, so.
Yeah, no, ones that we've answered to already.
Gotcha. Well, cause I see is, there's a line that says verify the building distance and it looks like it matters to us at all. Yeah.
Yes, I know. Make sure this place that was right on this like.
Yes, what you want, uh, okay, that's my thought.
Jackie's been in contact with him since June, May or June, and it's getting commercial as you guys own it.
Getting commercial.
Getting them to do something that's, that's more, so.
Do you have a bathroom in your existing building?
That we're in now? Yes.
Yeah, so you already have a septic. Are you using the same for the office? You'll make another one, cause it wasn't planned to be big enough at the time.
Okay.
Not enough for us, like.
Well, in a distance.
Distance, yeah, okay.
Even with my glasses, I can't read the distance from the building.
That's just from the fence line, is that?
Yeah, well, I don't know where your septic is, on the old building.
Oh, yeah, behind.
That's way too far.
On the side and behind.
I don't see anything. It all looks very perpetual, gathered. Anything we would want, they would probably want to.
Hey, increase this, we'll cite there.
Right.
Good morning. Any other questions? Not for me.
I make a motion to approve SPR 23-12 for 54 West Milling for current disposal of with or without the garage. While the way it is existing on the plans or smaller than that?
I support that motion. Take a vote call. Dee?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna risk you, uh, alright, draft ordinance 1223-11 accessory dwelling units, flag lots and in the moment, well, we went through this one pretty early. We have a lot of stuff that we had achievements on this.
I tried to get all the changes we discussed last time, but if you don't see any changes you requested in there, let me know and we can add them in.
Page one B meets the way I understood from last month's meeting, the way we wanted it, so I, I agree with that. I think it was at the number of four or something?
Yeah.
We need to change the flag lot definition in the book to reference what a flag lot is, but I know we have just been trying to go with what the definition is. Are we going to have? Do we have it in the book or is?
I did not see a definition of flag lots in chapter two.
Do we need to add that?
I think we added in, adding it in in a section where we talk about flag lots as a definition.
Okay.
We referenced a few examples, I think, from other jurisdictions, like Allen was a good one?
I think, Allen was for accessory dwelling units.
Okay, sorry.
I did, I wasn't able to find a ordinance, I think it was St. Charles, Illinois, that had the verbiage the way I thought, explained what we were trying to.
Yeah, cause that one's difficult.
It's a difficult concept. Yes.
Who led you did that?
Anything anyone sees? I don't, nothing's jumping out at me that like a good last thing, one of the stuff in discussion, looks like it's in there as discussed.
So now this is right now Steve on the, uh, the dimensional requirements. There's no requirement for square footage, is that correct? The ADUs.
The ADUs. But the ADUs, there isn't time. The only, the only requirement is that it has to be smaller. It can't be larger.
Right.
So. But I purposely went through and amended, I think it was section 4.12 to specifically say those dimensional requirements only, only apply at primary dwellings. those dimensional requirements only, only apply at primary dwellings.
Anything anyone else sees that changes, additions?
What would be the purpose of not having more than two flag posts abutting each other?
Pacing out driveways. If you wanted three flag lots to share a share a drive, they would need a special use for it. By the road anyway.
Yep.
So that would be the.
That makes sense.
Maybe the best way.
Yep. Anything else? Make a motion or?
I feel like I've made the most.
Drop. Drop. You can sit here all night, that's fair. I'll make a motion to approve draft ordinance twenty-two thirty-three dash eleven for accessory dwelling units, flag lots and minimum dwelling requirements as written. Court? Take a roll call. Dave?
Yes?
Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
All right. Takes us through our agenda for tonight, if, uh I know you've been on a roll.
I make a motion to adjourn.
It was court?
I guess, Jesse would like to say.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thanks. A minute six thirty-two.
You know, I noticed in the minute, at the last meeting, you did not, we did not make a motion to adjourn, is that why in the minutes you said that he just like?
Yeah.
He just started getting up and leaving.
You know, sometimes enough is enough.
Yes.